I'd like to call Congress back into order after a recess for engrossment. We are now on General -- nope, we are on third reading of our legislation right now. Oh, excuse me. Let's have reports of select committees.
Okay.
Thank you. The Rules and Ethics Committee met for engrossment and ONCA 1547, an act to amend ONCA 1519, the law establishing the Osage Commercial Property Fund to authorize expenditures out of the fund to provide for net revenue to be appropriated to the general fund or for a specific purpose to appropriate $391,160 from the Osage Commercial Property Fund to the general fund in the Treasury and to establish an alternate effective date. The sponsor is Congresswoman Edwards. The final committee action is due pass as properly engrossed with three yes votes from Pratt, Shaw, and Suprenon. Bill number ONCA 1567, an act to amend ONCA 1471 to provide a supplemental appropriation to the Division of Cultural Preservation, Arts, Heritage, and Language for fiscal year 2015 in the amount of $5,178 and to establish an alternate effective date. The sponsor is Congresswoman Buffalo Head. The final committee action is due pass as properly engrossed with three yes votes from Pratt, Shaw, and Suprenon. Bill number ONCA 1569, an act to amend ONCA 1476 to provide a supplemental appropriation to the Health, Fitness, and Wellness Division for fiscal year 2015 in the amount of $37,461 and to establish an alternate effective date. The sponsor is Congressman Shaw. The final committee action is due pass as properly engrossed with three yes votes from Pratt, Shaw, and Suprenon. Bill number ONCA 1568, an act to amend ONCA 1475 to provide a supplemental appropriation to the Division of Government Operations for fiscal year 2015 in the amount of $43,000. The sponsor is Congressman Walker. The final committee action is due pass as properly engrossed with three yes votes from Pratt, Shaw, and Suprenon. Bill number ONCA 1573, an act to amend ONCA 1472 to provide a supplemental appropriation to the Division of Education and Early Childhood Services for fiscal year 2015 in the amount of $195,896 and to establish an alternate effective date. The sponsor is Congresswoman Buffalo Head. The final committee action is due pass as properly engrossed with three yes votes from Pratt, Shaw, and Suprenon. And bill number ONCA 1573, an act to amend ONCA 1472 to provide a supplemental appropriation to the Division of Education and Early Childhood Services for fiscal year 2015 in the amount of $195,896 and to establish an alternate effective date. The sponsor is Congresswoman Buffalo Head. The final committee action is due pass as properly engrossed with three yes votes from Pratt, Shaw, and Suprenon. Thank you, Congresswoman. We are now on third reading. The first bill under third reading is ONCA 1547, an act to amend ONCA 1519, the law establishing the Osage Commercial Property Fund to authorize expenditures out of the fund to provide for net revenue to be appropriated to the general fund or for a specific purpose to appropriate $391,160 from the Osage Commercial Property Fund to the general fund of the Treasury and to establish an alternate effective date. Congresswoman Edwards is the sponsor and she is absent. Are there any other members that wish to speak for or against ONCA 1547? Seeing none, the question is, shall ONCA 1547 pass? Congressman Hamilton?
Yes.
Congressman Yett?
Yes.
Congressman Maker?
Yes.
Congressman Mason?
Yes.
Congressman Norris?
Yes.
Congresswoman Pratt?
Yes.
Congressman Shaw?
Yes.
Congressman Suprenon?
Yes.
Congressman Walker?
Yes.
Congresswoman Buffalo Head?
Yes.
Speaker Whitehorn? Yes. The bill passes. It has an alternate effective date. Is there any discussion to that? The question is, shall the alternate effective date pass? All in favor say yes.
Yes.
Alternate effective date passes. ONCA 1547 is sent to enrollment. The next bill we have on our agenda is ONCA 1567, an act to amend ONCA 1471 to provide a supplemental appropriation to the Division of Cultural Preservation, Arts, Heritage, and Language for the fiscal year 2015 in the amount of $5,178 and to establish an alternate effective date. Congresswoman Buffalo Head is the sponsor. How do you wish to proceed? Any other member wish to speak for or against this bill? Seeing none, the floor is yours, Congresswoman. The question is, shall ONCA 1567 pass? Congressman Yett?
Yes.
Congressman Maker?
Yes.
Congressman Mason?
Yes.
Congressman Norris?
Yes.
Congresswoman Pratt?
Yes.
Congressman Shaw?
Yes.
Congressman Suprenon?
Yes.
Congressman Walker?
Yes.
Congresswoman Buffalo Head?
Yes.
Congressman Hamilton?
Yes.
Speaker Whitehorn? Yes. The bill passes. It has an alternate effective date. Is there any discussion to that? The question is, shall the alternate effective date pass? All in favor say yes.
Yes.
Any opposed? Seeing none, the alternate effective date passes. ONCA 1567 is advanced to enrollment. The next bill we have on our agenda is ONCA 1569, an act to amend ONCA 1476 to provide a supplemental appropriation to the Health, Fitness, and Wellness Division for fiscal year 2015 in the amount of $37,461 and to establish an alternate effective date. Congressman Shaw is the sponsor. How do you wish to proceed?
I'll close.
Are there any other members that wish to speak for or against the bill? Seeing none, you have the floor, sir.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. This bill was to provide a supplemental appropriation to cover health clinic physicians to pay for certain key personnel who the Health Authority Board wished to hire prior to the effective date of the compact, which is October 1st. I'm told they want to be hired free pay periods before then. And again, they are new positions, not currently over at the Husker Health Center. The original amount was 49 after some changes in those key personnel positions and some readjustment of the numbers that amount now is to a little more than 37,000. So I urge you to vote for this. Thank you.
Thank you, Congressman. The question is, shall ONCA 1569 pass? Congressman Maker?
Yes.
Congressman Mason?
Yes.
Congressman Norris?
Yes.
Congresswoman Pratt?
Yes.
Congressman Shaw?
Yes.
Congressman Suprenon?
Yes.
Congressman Walker?
Yes.
Congresswoman Buffalo Head?
Yes.
Congressman Hamilton?
Yes.
Congressman Yett?
Yes.
Speaker Whitehorn? Yes. ONCA 1569 passes. It has an alternate effective date. Is there any discussion to that? The question is, shall the alternate effective date pass? All in favor say yes.
Yes.
Are there any opposed? Seeing none, the alternate effective date passes. ONCA 1569 is advanced to enrollment. Next bill on our agenda is bill number ONCA 1568, an act to amend ONCA 1475 to provide a supplemental appropriation to the Division of Government Operations for fiscal year 2015 in the amount of $43,000. Congressman Walker is the sponsor. How do you wish to proceed?
I might close.
Are there any other -- good answer. Are there any other members that wish to speak for or against this bill? Seeing none, Congressman Walker, you have the floor. The question is, shall ONCA 1568 pass? Congressman Mason?
Yes.
Congressman Norris?
Yes.
Congresswoman Pratt?
Yes.
Congressman Shaw?
Yes.
Congressman Suprenon?
Yes.
Congressman Walker?
Yes.
Congresswoman Buffalo Head?
Yes.
Congressman Hamilton?
Yes.
Congressman Yett?
Yes.
Congressman Maker?
Yes.
Speaker Whitehorn? Yes. ONCA 1568 passes. It has alternate effective date. An alternate effective date clause on there. Is there any discussion to that? Question is, shall the alternate effective date pass? All in favor say yes.
Yes.
Any opposed? Seeing none, the alternate effective date passes. ONCA 1568 is referred to enrollment. The next bill on our agenda is bill number ONCA 1573, an act to amend ONCA 1472 to provide a supplemental appropriation to the Division of Education and Early Childhood Services for fiscal year 2015 in the amount of $195,896 and to establish an alternate effective date. Congresswoman Buffalo Head is the sponsor. How do you wish to proceed?
I will.
The floor is yours.
Well, I'm not going to get up here and tell anyone that if they vote no, they don't care about Osages or they don't care about our children or they don't care about language. I don't like it when people do that to me. Your vote is your vote. And I do believe that everyone sitting in these seats care about the Osage people. That's why they've run for this office. And they have to vote the way their heart, their mind tells them to vote. And I think that everyone normally does a pretty good job of that. It's a tough thing to be in these seats. Oftentimes, we carry this home with us. And Congressman Eddie Reddigle said one time, this job is difficult. It'll make you laugh. It'll make you cry. And it does. And for me, I'm supportive of this administration's efforts to try to revive our language. And the immersion for this budget, yes, is in language and in education. And it kind of goes hand in hand. One of the things that I believe has been missing the last several years is the mechanics of someone overseeing the curricula and making sure that it's effective and providing us with an avenue of what we've done right, what we could do better. There's a new position in this legislation for this budget, and I think that it's needed. I think that it's badly needed and has been needed for quite some time. And they're not certain who they're going to hire, but I have confidence that they're going to hire the right person. I've said this before with other people there. I was raised by a full-blood Osage grandma that spoke Osage first, English second. She didn't learn English until she was five years old. I am very supportive of Mogri Lookout and his staff. And we know the teachers are going to be Donna Barone and Tracy Moore and David Webb and Addie Hutchins. And they're going to do a great job. And I have full support that they're going to help make this immersion happen. You hear more and more people in the last 10 years speaking Osage, and that's a testament to Mogri and his dedication and all his efforts, hour after hour that he's spent helping to revive this language. And I think it just needs a little bit of a push. And I think that this legislation combined with the language budget is the push that it needs to help keep the Osage language going and moving in stronger. So I would urge you to vote yes. Thank you.
Thank you, Congresswoman. Are there any other members that wish to speak for or against this bill?
I'm going to vote for this appropriation because it prevents that it's necessary to start this immersion program, which I think we're all in favor of. And I appreciate Congresswoman Buffalo Head didn't say that if you don't vote for it, the toenails are going to fall off and you don't like it. Stuff like that that we hear often up here. But anyway, I am concerned that a lot of people think that if we start this, that we're locked into a $2 million increase in education next year. And I don't feel that way. I think we can take a good, hard look at it when it comes up again. But I want to see it start. I'll be voting for it.
Thank you, Congressman. Are there any other members that wish to speak for or against this bill?
Thank you, Madam Speaker, members of Congress. I appreciate all of the discussion that was at the Education Committee that was heard there today. A lot of different perspectives were presented and expressed. Something you could hurt, in my opinion, which was not that we as a group or that Osages or our education language is not important. It's always about what we can afford. Right now, we approved an $8 million bill consisting only of tribal funds for scholarships. The current education budget for this last year FY '15 was right around $7.5 million. The next year, with a proposed $2 million increase to fund these programs, it will be $9.5. We spend a lot of money on education now, a lot. Question is, how much is too much and how much is not enough? You know, I wish I had benchmarks about what other tribes spend per student out of their tribal funds. I don't have that. And then how big a percentage of that is out of their total tribal funds, and therefore that would be a great equalizer. If you have more income, then you can pay a greater percentage or a larger amount. We placed ourselves on a $40 million diet, revenue diet from the Gaming Commission, but yet there continues to be appropriation after appropriation for additional monies as though we haven't done that. We haven't done that. So how we can be thinking of continuing to add additional appropriations of this size when our projected revenue is not going up is not sound fiscally responsible to me, and I cannot support that, even though I think that surely the seven and a half million in immersion program surely could be created, perhaps at the expense of other programs. That's still about $16,000 per student, for Osage student, which is probably twice the average amount spent by the state for a K through 12 student. So we spend a lot. We spend a lot now. Perhaps we're not very efficient at it. Perhaps reorganization could include some efficiencies that would allow such a program to be created without this additional large appropriation that will be coming for us to consider in September. So I urge you to think about the fiscal impact of this, whether or not executive in the Language Department can still come up with an immersion program without needing another $10 million next year. I haven't heard that anyone say that that's impossible, but I do know that right now, for it to be possible, we're told that it takes $2 million next year. $193,000 now that's in this bill is a small amount. It's the $2 million that's attached to it that's yet to come that has me concerned. I'll be voting no. Thank you.
Thank you, Congressman. Any other member wish to speak for or against this bill?
I've been back and forth. This is one I've been back and forth with. But I put a lot of thought into why I ran for this seat and where I was before, where I was working in the executive branch and much of what I saw in the offices that I was in and the lack of support at times. And so what I heard during several of the meetings was that the Education Task Force has -- this is not just the immersion. Yes, that's a piece of it, but I'm looking at it as a whole. And I've heard all the different parts of what this is going towards to increase and enhance our educational services for our children. And some of us have children who would go to the Boys and Girls Club and wish that they had a little more help with their after-school homework and maybe a little better services in the daycares and the headstarts. So there's a lot of moving parts inside there. So I think that's a lot of what I saw a lack of with many parents in our community and many things that I complained about. And I think that's part of why I ran for this seat, so that I could lend my voice and my support in enhancing those services. And I think this budget probably could have gone up a long time ago in previous administrations had perhaps some taken the time to really look at all these areas that we need greater support. And so I've heard additional reading programs and advocates in the schools, more certified individuals to assist our children and to increase the parental involvement. And that's key. That is absolutely key in our community, and that's where it starts. And I think that our tribal members need assistance in that area. So there's a lot of areas that plays a role here. So I have six children myself, and I think that we have all given our support, and I'm not, again, like the rest of us. It doesn't mean you don't support if you vote no. I'm just saying that I really agree with supporting this and I appreciate this administration's efforts at this time to move forward. And again, we can readdress it in the future, but I have to support this at this time. So I'll be voting yes.
Thank you, Congresswoman. Are there any other members that wish to speak for or against this bill? Congressman Norris?
Members of Congress, Madam Speaker, it's very difficult for me to come up here and try to explain why I'm going to vote one way or another on this. I do support our language and our immersion, the way that we're going to teach our children and others how to speak our language, how to conserve our language. But whenever we start, it's difficult to, whenever we're trying to make decisions and trying to be budget conscious. And I totally support our language program. I totally support preserving our language. Unfortunately, I cannot support this piece of legislation right now. It's very difficult for me to stand up here and say, yes, I support the language program, but no, I'm going to vote against this piece of legislation because of the dollars and suits attached to it. I'll throw it in the air.
Thank you, Congressman. Are there any other members that wish to speak for or against this bill? Congressman Yett?
Thank you, Madam Speaker, members of Congress. This is a difficult situation and a difficult decision to make. When I ran, one of the things I said is that I was going to try my best to make decisions as if this was a business. And this is a business. This tribe is a business. And I don't believe that we make the best decisions at times as a body, as a government. Currently, we're strapped for cash. We're modifying projected revenues so we can fund programs or we can fund different needs. It's all available. We need to go back and we need to see if we can find some more money. We need to wait till we know where our carryover is going to end. I think it's sad, in my opinion, that we had $43 million this year and we were able to save $200,000. To me, that makes no sense. If I was running a business, I was generating $43 million worth of revenue, and I was only able to save $200,000. That doesn't say much for me as a businessman. If the federal government was giving me a grant for $43 million and told me to spend everything, yeah, I'd spend it. But that's not what this is. Our gaming's not the federal government. It's not a grant. It's the revenue, it's tribe, and we spend it like there's no tomorrow. I had a constituent today ask me, "What are you guys doing up there? I don't understand it." I said, "I don't understand what you guys are doing." I said, "What do you mean?" He said, "You guys are spending money like there's no end." I couldn't say, "No, we don't," because we do. And I'm not saying I don't support this, but I feel like we can't continue to fund every new initiative that comes over to this body. At some point, we have to say, we have to stop. We have to wait. We have to put it on hold till our revenue goes up, but we can cut costs somewhere else. Because I think we all know there's a lot of money in that appropriation deal that could be cut. If it was our business, we'd be there to be savings. We'd be making cuts. We'd be cutting back. But we don't do that. We say yes to everything. I hate to say no to this, but I'm going to have to go along with this decision. Thank you.
Thank you, Congressman. Are there any other members that wish to speak for or against this bill?
Members of Congress, I appreciate all the words that have been said about this. There's been a lot of talk and discussion. We just passed a bill out, 1547, that released some money that was being put into a commercial property fund to be able to spend this money that we're getting ready to vote on right I voted yes to release that money in that bill because I was for the idea of the commercial property fund. It's the only thing that I can really remember doing, other than setting aside the permanent fund money when I first got on Congress, to actually collect revenue in one place that I knew was going to sit there and possibly do something to help the economic development of our tribe. I support education. I support immersion. I've homeschooled my children, and I know that you teach them at an early age. You teach them before they can talk, and you let them hear that Osage language. I support that. But I can't help but believe that if the Education Task Force was not given -- let me back at you. We talked to them today. They were given the idea or they were given the task of creating and looking at an education system to enhance our education for our children here. And they went out and they did as they were tasked. I asked the chair of that task force today, "Were you given a budget to work within?" Because everybody's sitting at these chairs, "We have a budget. We know what our projected revenue is that we have to work within." I can't support this legislation right now because I know what our budget looks like. I know what it's going to look like for next year. This appropriation of $195,000 and some change is mostly for positions that we're going to fill, we're going to authorize right now to We're going to authorize right now to fill. And then we're going to go into FY16, and those physicians are still going to be in the FY16 budget. We know as a body that it's hard to take things back, especially physicians and benefits that we give our people. I know we can visit this again in FY16 and look at it. But if you extrapolate that dollar amount out for 12 months, that's that $2.3 million that that budget is going to increase. We will be spending over $9 million. That's what's requested. Actually, it's $10 million, $8,500. $10 million, $8,500 that we're going to put into the Education Department budget next year because of this action right here. Yes, we have the opportunity to go through it when we sit down during the CHISO session. But you're authorizing physicians right now, for the most part, for the lion's share of this appropriation. And that's always been a big deal in the Osage, to not take physicians back, to leave our Osage people working. We've been scrambling around, trying to get things paid for this session for two months, for the final two months of FY15. My job is to figure out how we spend that money and where we're getting it. There's no economic development built in to the FY16 budget. We've not...I've asked the Executive, and there's nothing in their budget they've sent over that's going to be trying to get more revenue coming in to our Treasury for the Osage Nation people to spend. We have to have that to do wonderful initiatives like this. We've had great professionals. They've worked hard. Our executives worked hard. I support the idea, but an idea has mechanics behind it and has dollar signs behind it. And we need to consider that when we cast our vote. I can't support this at this time because I know our financials stay.
Any other member wish to speak for or against this bill? Congresswoman Buffalohead, did you just want to open and you're done? Okay. Question is, shall ONCA 1573 pass?
Congressman Norris?
No.
Congresswoman Pratt?
Yes.
Congressman Shaw?
No.
Congressman Supranaw?
No.
Congressman Walker?
Yes.
Congresswoman Buffalohead?
Yes.
Congressman Hamilton?
Yes.
Congressman Yett?
No.
Congressman Aaker?
Yes.
Congressman Mason?
Yes.
Speaker Whitehorn?
The bill passes. There's a matter of an alternate effective date on that. Is there any discussion to the alternate effective date? Seeing none, the question is, shall the alternate effective date pass? All in favor say yes?
Yes.
Any opposed? Seeing none, the alternate effective date passes. Bill Number ONCA 1573 is referred to enrollment. And we are at the end of our agenda. Are there any motions or notices? Seeing none?
Congressman Buffalohead?
Just like to say that I think that Selena Primo did an outstanding job. This is her first special session. She just joined our team recently. I think she did a good job. So she's to be committed for that. I want you to adjourn the session.
And a new Sergeant at Arms, too, that I'd like to recognize, too.
And a new Budget Analyst.
And a new Budget Analyst. Thank you, guys, all. You did have done a fine job, yes. Speaker...Again, Assistant Chief?
I just want to thank the Congress for their work. I think this was a record-breaking session in terms of the amount of work on the load. And I want you all to know that regardless of how anything turned out, we at the Executive appreciate your efforts. We appreciate your labor. And we appreciate the good consideration, the full consideration you gave the legislation plan.
We are at adjournment now. Congressman Buffalohead, will you...
Motion to adjourn the session.
Oh, excuse me. I'm a second here.
Oh, I just wanted to say that I think that might be the first time that I've ever changed my mind based on debate. But I just admire the Congressmen stood up, voted, and reached. I appreciate it.
Anybody else? Congressman Buffalohead?
Motion to adjourn the session.
Second.
With a second. All in favor say yes?
Yes.
Session is adjourned. Good work, Congress.